So, we're going to go ahead and get started. And we're going to start with the salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, in terms of roll call, let the record show that we have all commissioners present except Commissioner Allen and Griswold. And do we have a recording of the summary of hearing procedures? That you can play? I can just read it. So, yeah. Summary of hearing procedures. If you want to address the commission, please fill out a speaker card located on the table near the audiovisual technician and deposit the completed card in the basket. There are also speaker cards in the back of the chambers and at the side entrance. The procedure for the hearing is as follows. After the staff reports, applicants and appellants may make a five-minute presentation. The chair will call out names on the submitted speaker cards in the order received. As your name is called, line up in front of the microphone at the front of the chamber. Each speaker will have two minutes. Speakers using a translator will have four minutes. After the public testimony, the applicant and appellant may make closing remarks for an additional five minutes. Planning commissioners may ask questions of the speakers. Response to commissioner questions will not reduce the speaker's time allowance. The public hearing will then be closed and the planning commission will take action on the item. The planning commission may request staff to respond to the public testimony, ask staff questions, and discuss the item. If you challenge these land use decisions in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. The planning commission's action on rezonings, pre-zonings, general plan amendments, and code amendments is only advisory to the city council. The city council will hold public hearings on these items. Section 20.120-dash, no dash, sorry, .400 of the municipal code provides the procedures for legal protest to the city council on rezonings and pre-zonings. The planning commission's action on conditional use permits is appealable to the city council in accordance with section 20.100.220 of the municipal code. Agendas and a binder of all staff reports have been placed on the table near the door for your convenience. So, we're going to move on to public comment. If there's anyone who would like to speak to any items that are not agendized, they are welcome to at this point in time. Seeing none, we will move on to deferrals and removals from calendar. And let the record show that Commissioner Griswold has arrived. Anything from staff? Nope, staff shakes their head. So, on to item number four, the consent calendar.
Motion approved. Second.
There's a motion to approve and a second. Are there any, is there any discussion on the agenda item that has been motioned and seconded?
Before we vote, could staff give an update?
I suppose. Staff, would you like to give an update?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Staff received a question from Commissioner Yasni about the development, of how the development standards are regulating the light use. Staff would like to add the following to the development standards to clarify the process for future changes to the lights. Changes to the analyzed lighting type TLC-LED-1150 and amount of lighting on the athletic fields that could result in intensification of the illumination in the area shall be subject to a discretionary review to determine conformance to the City of San Jose Lighting Policy 4-3, including but not limited to promoting energy-efficient lighting and continuing the operation of the Lick Observatory by reducing light pollution and sky glow as may be amended. Thank you.
Let me see if I can work the equipment here. My first time. Ooh, look at that. Commissioner Yasni.
Thank you. My comment or question to staff had to do, excuse me, with the fact that there's absolutely nothing in the general development plan standards that deals with avoidance of environmental impacts. The issues associated with the lighting, based on my experience with field lighting at other schools in the past, is that there are two issues. One is the amount of light, which can be a factor of how tall the poles are and what kind of light fixtures they are, and how late at night they're used. This project is proposing a very reasonable time period, 6:30 in the morning to 9:00 at night. And there is nothing in the zoning, at least, that precludes having football games at night that run until 11 o'clock with the field lights on. And that is the single greatest source of angst in the use of school fields and field lighting. And so, I appreciate staff's modification to include clarity on the light itself, although there's not, consistent with, consistency with the city's standards and avoiding impacts to the, to Lick Observatory doesn't really get to the issue of spill over lighting into the neighbor's backyard, which doesn't occur with the current arrangement and the proposed design. So, I'm afraid if that was intended to respond to my issue, it does not do so, at least not sufficiently. So, I would ask to have it pulled from the consent calendar.
All right. That is granted. So, do we want to start with a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle Flores, Planning Project Manager. The project being considered this evening is a planned development rezoning from the APD Plan Development Zoning District to the PQP Plan Development Zoning District on an approximately 17.64 gross acre site and a planned development permit to allow four 65-foot-tall field lights on an approximately 3.19 gross acre portion of the site. The project conforms with the Development Standards General Plan and Lighting Policy. The project site for the field lights is within the boundaries of the planned development permit rezoning, planned development rezoning. The project's public quasi-public general plan land use designation is intended for public land uses, including schools. The field lights would facilitate the use of the existing soccer lacrosse athletic field located on the north side of West Hennig Street. The project conforms with the city council policy 4-3 for outdoor lighting on private development in that outdoor recreational facilities are exempt from providing fully shielded lights if they provide a photometric study and refer the project to the Lick Observatory. The use of the field lights would be limited to Monday through to Friday from 6:30 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The addendum to the Bellarmine College Preparatory Master Plan mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project. Based on the analysis and conclusions in the addendum, the proposed project would not result in any new impacts not previously disclosed in the previous mitigated negative declaration, nor would it result in a substantial increase in the magnitude of any significant environmental impact previously identified in the initial study or mitigated negative declaration. The project would not increase the number of athletes and the field usage would be turned off by, the field light usage would be turned off by 9:00 p.m. The field lights would not increase the usage intensity of the field as it would distribute existing uses with similar participant numbers. Staff has not received any public comments. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to city council to adopt the environmental resolution, adopt an ordinance rezoning the approximately 17.64 gross acre site from the APD Plan Development Zoning District to the PQP Plan Development Zoning District and adopt a resolution approving the planned development permit subject to conditions to effectuate the planned development zoning district and to allow four 65-foot-tall ground-mounted field lights on an approximately 3.19 gross acre portion of the subject site. Thank you.
So, at this point, I believe the applicant has an opportunity to present for five minutes.
My name is Jeff Berg, architect with DevCon Construction, address 960 Gibraltar Drive, Milpitas. So, we're happy to be here tonight after about eight-month process to be here presenting to you about our soccer and lacrosse field lighting project. As staff read, we have gone through the process of amending our initial study that supported the master plan and PD zoning application that was done back in 2007/8. We believe that we have a good project and our lights basically conform to the city's policies of cutoff fixtures, spillage. We have no proposed amplified sound. There is no additional field use by outside groups or clubs. This is not a field for rent. It's to serve the existing school population. So, I just wanted to make that clear this evening. So, happy to answer any technical questions if commissioners have them. Thank you.
We do have some questions, and I'll start with Commissioner Oliverio.
No question for the applicant. Just a question when the applicant's finished and his staff's done.
Commissioner Yasni.
I pushed the wrong button. I think the project is great. I think you've done a good job of minimizing the likelihood of problems on the neighborhood. They're fortunate that those buildings intervene between the field and the homes. I just want a commitment on the zoning, that you're not going to do anything to increase the impacts beyond those that will occur from this proposed project, which means no football games at 11 o'clock at night with the field lights on, basically, and you're not going to increase the intensity of light on the field. And that would be in the zoning, not just in the permit. PD permits come and go, but zoning stays there.
Well, at this point, we wouldn't be having football games on the field because it's not a football field. It's a soccer field.
Soccer's getting more and more popular. You may want to have 11 o'clock games with soccer.
It certainly is.
But you understand the point of my concern.
I do understand the point. I believe that the school would be perfectly acceptable if you feel the need to address or put a condition on us. I guess that would be the mechanism that you're asking for here tonight to agree to some type of language.
Technically, I want you to add it to your zoning. Put a statement on the general development plan to that effect.
The development standards portion?
Yes.
Okay. And that would be, I mean, we have hours of use that are stipulated already, the development standards and the conditions of use.
Not on the development standards.
Not on the GDP. I just, not on the lights.
Oh, okay.
And I also looked, your default zoning is public quasi-public, which for late-night uses defines some of them as midnight, some as 10:00 p.m. So, my understanding is this is intended to be 9:00 p.m. So, I think we should put a 9:00 p.m. in order to satisfy your concern, put a 9:00 p.m. end date with the hours of operation in the general development plan.
For the field lights.
For the field lights. And additionally, I believe that there was a lighting study done for this project. That should probably be referenced as the type of lighting that is being approved or something that is functionally equivalent.
Yes.
And that should be in the general development plan as well.
That was already included in the initial update from staff about the specific lighting.
Yeah.
And you're satisfied with that?
Yes, I was satisfied.
Okay, because I thought it could be more specific, but if we all feel that that's okay, that's okay.
I think that will probably work, but the hours would be a touchier issue.
Yeah, and I think that in the PQP zoning also, it doesn't allow amplified sound after, I believe it's 10:00 p.m., but if you're not operating until 9:00, so there are some considerations there also.
You could play music in the dark, I guess.
Well, maybe you're amplifying go bells or something. I don't know, but you know, but yeah.
Commissioner Leva?
I was just going to ask, in terms of intensity, I know the staff read into the record something about the type of equipment used, but the report referred to 121,000 lumens. So...
Can you put that in too?
Rather than talking about equipment, I mean, the measured light output, I think, would be more of a level, you know, regardless of like what kind, if it's, I don't know, some futuristic source, it's one little point and generates the same light output.
And actually, the important concept is functional equipment. Every time you turn around, they're coming up with a better source of lighting, and they can, in some cases, provide an equivalent amount of light without actually generating the same measurements, which is why lumens is a, is a good...
Better than wattage.
Good, something to tie to.
John?
Sorry. Staff just wanted to make sure that we were very careful in how we wanted to craft the light, just like the, back in the day when sodium lights were the high, popular thing to do. We want, that's why there's a little more hesitation to put it in the development standards. If a new technology comes along or different aspects, we wanted to have that kind of flexibility. So, we did say that we'd have to do a new light study, they would have to do the equipment that's equivalent. It's just a little careful when you use specific numbers, because lumens can mean one thing and its impacts are different. So, there will be some kind of evaluation to do that in technology. So, we did put specific standards in that. Photometrics use footlight candles evaluations. So, there's a lot of different...
Yes. And I'm not trying to inhibit future efficiency or operations. I just don't want any more light shining on the neighborhood late at night than would occur under the relatively moderate circumstances envisioned in this proposal. So, the attorney's reference to the hours. What did you say?
I just said in, I just said in the development standards, it's 6:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. is the timing for the use of the lights.
And the staff wording for the light intensity, that would reassure me that...
And the functionally equivalent, you know, through a lighting study would mean that it's not spilling over more than is currently approved and hopefully less. That would be the minimum standard.
Are there any further questions for the applicant? You have a question now for the applicant? All right, fine.
So, you heard the question from my colleague. Is that prohibitive or problematic for Bellarmine in any way?
In terms of the equipment or the times?
Time.
Times, we've already, I think, through the development standard portion, which I understand, where you're talking about zoning, but we're processing the PD permit at the same time. So, the school is fine with the times. And to be clear, we've talked about 9:00 p.m. on weekdays, and we're talking about 7:00 p.m. on Saturdays, just to be perfectly clear. So, the school, at this point, we would be willing to accept that. If it needed to be read into the zoning portion of our application, I think, unless there's an objection behind me that I'm looking at, I don't think there is.
Nobody's screaming or waving their hands.
Yeah, so I think we're probably, we would be okay.
I just imagine with overtime, there might be an opportunity, championships, et cetera, some other type of game that you might need that extended time. We have parks in San Jose, they're lit till 10:00 p.m. for field play. So, I personally, I don't like restricting you more than the city's already...
I would ask for more, but I just under, at this point here, where we're standing in front of a commission adopting body after eight months of work, I don't, I would love to take 10:00, but I don't know if that's an option at this point.
Not without further environmental review.
And we're not prepared to do that. I can tell you, we're prepared not to do.
Then I think that's one, that's unfortunate, but I mean, you know, having had numerous high schools in San Jose that have obtained lights, I can tell you, it's been nothing but improvement.
Yeah.
These are not the lights from long past. These are lights that are directed onto the field that don't have significant leakage to the neighborhood. And frankly, in many of these neighborhoods, and even this one, they like the lights on at that hour. If you know this area, it's got the industrial across the street, it's got the railroad tracks, it has its own conditions, and by Bellarmine lighting this field, it's not only doing a service for its students, but also for the neighborhood.
Well, maybe after being a good neighbor for a year, we'll bring back 100 neighbors and approach the commission and say, "We'd love to go to 10:00 p.m."
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Oliverio.
Commissioner Griswold has a question?
Question, comment to the staff.
Mic, use the mic, use the mic. Sorry. It was more of a question or comment to staff and perhaps our attorney versus the applicant, so. You may sit down.
Okay. Thank you.
So, my question is on the, I guess, putting in the standards into the zoning versus the permit. If, if the applicant, say, wanted to come back and amend their permit to extend the hours, and that request was to have lights till 10:00 p.m. or whatever it is, would that require a new environmental study because it's not consistent with their permit as issued?
And Tychelli, Environmental Project Manager and Supervisor, yes, they would need to study that extra hour, and I believe there's also, yeah.
So then, I guess my sort of thoughts on Commissioner Yasni's comments, I tend to agree with Commissioner Oliverio, that why would we be putting on additional requirements if the applicant can't do what we're concerned about already within the confines of their permit? And the, it sounds like the overlay zoning of the, of the public quasi, what you said, what was it exactly?
It's actually the base zoning is public quasi-public.
And so, then we'd be, and that allows for a higher number or a later number of hours for the lights, and so we're putting on the applicant a lower number in their zoning and when the environmental concern can be addressed through the permitting process if they apply down the road. And we know that changing zoning is much more arduous than changing a permit, and maybe that's the concern is, well, we don't want them to come back and easily change the hours on it, but the underlying zoning allows for the greater hours. It's not against the city policy to have longer hours. We just need to make sure it's studied environmentally.
Well, one of the, just to comment, is that normally this would be a PQP zoning. And the only reason this is coming back, in my understanding, for a PD zoning, a specialized zoning, is because the proposed height of the lighting is much greater than what's currently allowed in the PQP district. So, that's why they're asking for a specialized PD zoning district. So, attendant with that higher lighting standard, that had to be evaluated through SEQA and, you know, do whatever kind of project avoidance measures would avoid having those types of impacts. So, everything that we're talking about tonight is really related to the impact of the taller height of that. So, with regard to the zoning, there is nothing in that default zoning of, or the base zoning of PQP that would allow this use without, you know, us doing a PD zoning. This is just kind of the default for other uses of what can be used there. And so, with the exception of the height. And so, Commissioner Yasni's comment is that it, without putting those limitations on type of lighting and the, how can I put, performance measures for the lighting, this taller lighting in the general development standards in the zoning for this, and without putting a time limit, when people come in to later on do permit amendments, their PD permit amendments, which require consistency with the zoning ordinance, that there would be no regulations in that zoning ordinance limiting the use of those tall lighting fixtures as to time or as to impact. And so, that's why she desires, I believe, to put them into the general development plans in the zoning.
Can I ask a question of staff, though? Because what I'm hearing is that's not really the case, because the regulation would be through doing an environmental review and then ensuring through that environmental review that any impacts that need to be mitigated before a permit would be an issue would be addressed through that process, not through...
So, so to clarify, they wouldn't be able to have the lights even if they try to use the PQP base district anyways, because it wouldn't allow the height. So, staff wanted to put it as a condition to kind of leave that flexibility, knowing that there is additional environmental that they would need to do. So, that was kind of a balance of where do you put it as a condition of development standards? So, we felt the conditions were a way to address those concerns in terms of doing it, but we're open to different ways of kind of approaching it.
I think one of the concerns was that if you don't include it in the zoning, future applications would assume, and different staff might assume, that different hours and different types of lighting were not an issue with this application now and that they could do it differently. You know, go to midnight or whatever when it has not been evaluated.
But that would be incorrect, wouldn't it? It would, it requires a...
It would be, but that happens. And so, this is a stopgap to tell you, this is all the zoning allows right now. If you want to do something different, you have to come in with a different application, not just a PD permit where all of a sudden it will be assumed that you comply with the zoning because all it does is limit height. It raises height. It does nothing else with regard to that lighting. So, you know, that, that's why this is being suggested, I believe.
I mean, I understand, I understand the suggestion, but I guess where, where I see is that we're creating almost like a, an extra safety measure that the staff is going to, we're assuming that they're going to make a mistake and miss the lighting issue if the applicant were to come back and...
I assume that staff and I make mistakes all the time. Time, and that the public also, in reading a document, will also be mistaken. And the applicant, after several years of having different people work for the applicant, is also going to do that. You want it to be as clear in the higher-level document as possible as you need to. And so, here, for example, we're saying fine allows at 65 or 70 feet.
65.
65-foot light, lights. And they've evaluated the light spillage from that in the SEQA document. They have not evaluated time past 9:00. So, it is good to basically limit in the zoning what you've currently evaluated under SEQA. Because otherwise, if I come in with a PD permit amendment later and a staff member, the public, the applicant takes a look at the zoning, they say, "Oh, well, look, it's allowed. There's no limitation on hours here. There's no, you know, and we revert to PQP, which is, I believe, midnight."
Would not revert back to PQP once a time.
But it's the base zoning, and you do have hours under the base zoning.
Yes.
And if you don't put different hours in the PD zoning, then guess what? It's the base zoning district hours with those limitations. So, and I just skimmed them, there are, there are a few uses that you can do 10:00 p.m. This doesn't appear to be included. There are other uses that are midnight. And so, without a different hour of operation, that is, the default is your base zoning for hours, for outdoor activity. And that's why it's being suggested and recommended that it be included in the general development standards.
I guess I just have a little bit more confidence in staff. If the request was to come back and amend the lights, that they would pick up that the lights was an issue and an environmental issue. And so, that's, I mean, we, I guess we can agree to disagree.
I wouldn't have confidence in anybody doing that. And I'm not being insulting to staff. I'm being realistic.
So, should we do that on every motion we take?
What? Commissioner Yasni's in the queue.
If I could defend myself.
I'm not going to attack you.
I know, I understand. The project that was proposed and for which an environmental analysis was done was for light standards that were 65 feet tall, had a certain type of lights, and were only turned on between 6:30 in the morning and 9:00 at night on weeknights. That was the project for which the amendment to the negative declaration was prepared. And because you could not build those standards apparently under the old PD zoning that was present on this property, a new PD zoning was proposed, and the city, as it now does, included a realistic base zoning, the PQP zoning, so that if the property owner wants to develop in the future under that zoning, he can do so. But the project that was evaluated and that we're being asked to approve tonight is a planned development zoning... planned development zoning with light posts that are 65 feet tall and can only be turned on between 6:30 in the morning and 9:00 at night. That's it. But the project we're being asked to approve doesn't contain those avoidance measures for not causing significant impact. We're approving a PD zoning that says, oh, whatever's off in here and someplace else, and you can look it up if you can find it in the paperwork, because that's what I had to do to find out what the mitigated negative declaration said. So my point is, one, we have a, an obligation to be clear to the applicant and to the neighbors and to the future people who might be interested in this project, to be perfectly clear that this is the project we're approving.
I think I understand what you mean. It's not the, the analysis that was done, we're changing the zoning, and so the analysis needs to match the zoning change and constraint with what analysis has been done. Not that we're fearful down the road, there'll be a change, but if the zoning doesn't encapsulate the environmental analysis done to date or take into account what could be, then it's not the, it's not adequate for the zoning change itself.
It's both reasons. It's basically notice to everybody what's being approved and that there was adequate environmental review for what's being improved.
Yes.
And if we want it, you know, if, if there were a desire to expand the parameters of this project, to provide more time, higher lights, brighter lights, what, more lights, then that's beyond the, what was applied for here and would need to have further environmental review. But the GDP needs to reflect those limitations.
So at this point, are there any further questions for staff? Seeing none, I have no speaker cards, and so I'm going to close the public hearing. And with that, I could entertain a motion. Commissioner Yezny?
Madam Chair, I would like to prove, to move that we consider the addendum to the Bellarmine College Master Plan mitigated negative declaration in accordance with SEQA, adopt an ordinance rezoning the project with the reference modifications to the general development plan previously discussed, including the hours and the staff's proposed language on the type of lighting, and adopt a resolution approving a planned development permit as stated in the staff recommendation.
So there's a motion by Commissioner Yezny and a second by Commissioner Pierre Luigi Oliverio. Any further discussion on the motion? Would you like to speak to your motion, Commissioner Yezny? I thought you were contemplating it very hard whether you wanted to say anything further. Commissioner Oliverio?
No, I'm just, I would like to approve this and thanks for all the patience. It's a long, it's a long process to do things that are, with, most people would consider simple. No offense to anyone here, I'm just saying in the community, most people enjoy having the opportunity to have lights on for athletic play, but I'd say most everyday residents don't know the complexity behind it and the process that you have to go through. So thank you for your patience and thank you for the planning staff to prepare the report, and thank you to my colleagues.
Okay, Commissioner Yezny changed your mind.
I did. If 100 of the neighbors want to come down here and ask to have the lights on later hours, you can ask the City Council to initiate a rezoning of the property to allow the lights to be on later.
So at this point, I'm going to call for a vote, and I'm not sure how to do that here. There we go. All right. Motion passes and noting that Commissioner Allen is not here. So thank you to the applicant, and we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is, there's nothing on the public hearing agenda. Referrals from council?
Yes, two items were referred from this commission to City Council on August 27th, and both of them were approved. Specifically, there are item number 2.15, which is a request for authorization to apply for the Senate Bill to Plan and Grant Program. It was approved as recommended by the commission. The second one, item was 10.1C19-010, which is conventional rezoning for rail property located at 419 North 5th Street, which was also approved as recommended by the commission.
Okay. And I believe that was the report from City Council, so moving on to the action minutes.
I would like to request a slight change to the action minutes, which I believe said something like no items under the report. This is the action minutes for August 14th. There's a reference in 7A, report from City Council, no reports, but our senior staff member here actually gave us two or three items that evening, so I'd like to add those to the record, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Leva. It was actually three items that were approved.
Yeah. Otherwise, I move approval with that.
Okay, there's a motion and second. And now let's vote.
Aye.
Got this great technology on. All right, motion passes unanimously. Next item, subcommittee formation reports in outstanding business. Is there anything from staff on this?
None.
All right. Anything on the commission calendar and study sessions? Seeing nothing. Anything under E, public record?
None whatsoever.
Okay. Then this meeting is adjourned.